This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thank you. I just like to welcome everybody to this evening's city council meeting. Today is Wednesday, December 16th, 2020. I'd like to call this evening's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic which stands one nation under the Constitution for all.
So next on the agenda, before we really get into the meeting this evening, the Administrative Services Manager Maria will be giving the oath of office to our newest city council member, Mr. Dennis Hill. You can please administer the oath.
Dennis, please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Dennis Hill, do solemnly swear.
I, Dennis Hill, do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will do to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
Truly faithfully diligently and impartially. Truly faithfully diligently and impartially.
Truly faithfully diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the Office of Counsel, position number two.
Perform the duties of the Office of Counsel, position number two.
City of La Center.
City of La Center.
In and for Clark County.
In and for Clark County.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Congratulations, Dennis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dennis.
Congratulations, councilmember. Okay, very good. The next, may I have the real call, please?
Councilmember Both.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Strobin.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
And Councilmember Hill.
Here.
And Mayor Thornton.
Present. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Don't move.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, I do have a proclamation I'll be reading this evening. Well, this proclamation is declaring January 9th, 2021 as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in the City of La Center. Whereas appreciate the extraordinary efforts and sacrifices made by law enforcement officers and their family members on a daily basis in order to protect our schools, workplaces, roadways, homes, and visitors. And whereas the safety and well-being of individuals is important to the prosperity of families and communities. And whereas law enforcement officers throughout our communities are dedicated to protecting and serving neighborhoods, schools, families, and families. And whereas law enforcement officers risk their lives each and every day in order to ensure public safety and enforce the laws of the land. And whereas the City of La Center community values the courage and devotion of our local law enforcement officers, as well as our collective prosperity depends on the integrity with which our law enforcement officers maintain peace and security. And now therefore, I, Mayor Blake Thornton, do hereby recognize January 9th, 2021 as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in the City of La Center and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. I'd like to get a motion to approve the proclamation.
Don't move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to declare, to approve the proclamation declaring January 9th, 2021 as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in the City of La Center. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, there's three. Dear counsel, I am writing to include my support for a roundabout being used as a part of the Fourth Street Widening Project. Roundabouts are the natural choice moving forward as they provide much better safety and movement than signals do. Signals will not be able to keep up with future traffic and the intersection will then have to be redone again sooner. This will cost a lot more in the long run. We have had great success with roundabouts and that should continue. Thank you for considering the future of our town and working to make it better. Sincerely, Martin Esoskin. I went to school in our sweet little town and have lived here the last 10 years raising my own family. I just want to say that I strongly oppose a traffic signal. Not only would it back up traffic way worse than it already is at busy times, it ruins our small-town feel. A roundabout is a much better option, safety-wise and aesthetically. I know I'm not the only one who feels this way. Please listen to residents of our community and do the right thing. Jennifer Scanlon. And this one is from Sean Wright. I'd like to quickly bring attention to an issue regarding public disclosure of metadata. I've been denied my public disclosure request for CAD files of the Fourth Street Widening Project, essentially a request for the metadata associated with the current construction drawings being displayed by the city. This rejection is based on these files not being in the possession of the City of La Center and instead on the consultant's computer. Consultants working for the city must disclose files if they are working as the functional equivalent of a city employee. The city attorney Bronson Potter has notified me that PBS is not the functional equivalent of a city employee while working on this project. However, I found this very odd. I often draw public improvement construction documents for the City of Kelso. If a citizen were to put in a request for my CAD files, I would be happy to share the files with them and I would be required to do so under the Public Disclosure Act. If a project was too large for me to design and we hired a consultant, I don't have the faintest idea why the project's files should no longer be open to public disclosure. Whatever company we hire would be working as my functional equivalent and performing my core duties as a city employee to design and manage infrastructure. They may be hired simply because I don't have the time or resources to design the project myself and I see no reason why they should comprise the Public Disclosure Act. Regardless of if this situation would truly fail the Telford test requiring public disclosure of consultant files, it doesn't seem very transparent or consistent with the Public Disclosure Act intent to be able to hide metadata from funneling work through a consultant. If someone requested files from me that I didn't have on hand but a consultant that we hired did, I'd happily go out of my way to try to, to try to get those files for them. I'm quietly, I'm quite surprised the City of La Center won't do the same for their citizens. One more announcement for any listeners. I'm planning a protest of the traffic signal installation. Anyone who wishes to join to speak out for child safety in our school zones should meet at the intersection of Fourth Highland, Fourth and Highland on January 9th, 2021 at 10:30 a.m. Also, I hope everyone has a lovely holiday and a wonderful time with their families. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, next is the mayor's report. I do have a few things that I'd like to share with the council this evening. First of all, again, I would like to welcome Councilmember Hill to the city council. And I'd also like to acknowledge that Dennis has served on the La Center Planning Commission for the past nine years. And I want to thank you for your service as a planning commissioner, Dennis. And again, I'm happy to see that you've been seated this evening as our newest member on the, on the city council.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to remind everyone that my next mayor town hall will be at 5:30 Wednesday, January 5th, 2021. Virtual meeting. Everyone is welcome and you can find all the information to attend the meeting virtually on the city website.
Mayor, it is Tuesday, January 5th for your council meeting, not Wednesday.
Thank you for that correction.
Sorry, town hall meeting.
Yep, thank you. Also, I'd just like to mention that, like I just said, Dennis Hill was on the planning commission. Since he's resigned the planning commission, from the planning commission, there's now a vacancy. So the center is accepting applications for a new planning commissioner. And all the application information can be found on the city website. Want to remind everyone that the city offices will be closed December 24th and 25th Christmas holiday and on Friday, January 1st for the New Year's holiday. Finally, I just want to wish all the city council members, city staff, planning commissioners, budget advisory committee members, hardworking consultants, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and I hope everybody has a happy and safe holiday season. With that, we will go to the.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and the public. I am going to defer my city attorney's report until the community development report because I would like to speak to you about some of the issues pertaining to the rural side of state's development. But I want to do it in the context of Mr. Swanson's report. Otherwise, this is our last meeting for 2020. And I would just like to thank you for allowing me to service your city attorney for 2020 or the last 10 months, 10 months of 2020. I've, I've really enjoyed this opportunity.
Thank you for that. Okay, next are council member comments. Councilmember Both?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, my two would like to welcome Dennis to the planning commission. We look forward to having him joining us. The C-Trans December meeting had a number of items which I want to briefly summarize for you. Board approved the operating and capital budget for 2021 for C-Trans. It was interesting to note to me that the 2021 operating revenue for the new year for 2021 is projected to be about 11% lower than in 2020. Operating revenue will be $68 million, $68,300,000. The total net operating expense will be about 5.8% lower than in 2020. And the operating expense will be, is projected to be $65,000, 65 million rather, $700,000. Because of those numbers, it's projected there will be actually a positive net income for C-Trans, even though that'll be 63% lower than, than was budgeted for 2020. They still anticipated that there will be a positive net income of $2.6 million. And that's, that's good news. The capital budget is planned to be $12,500,000. Most of that money will be spent in facilities, equipment, and on the mill plane bus rapid transit line. The board approved five policy and bylaw revisions. They were, they're pretty minor. They were mainly housekeeping type issues. A number of that it's had to do with the reliance more and more on electronics during the, during this COVID situation. The board also approved an extension of the inter-local temporary license agreement with the city of Vancouver. This is a second extension of the temporary license. And this will provide temporary space at C-Trans Evergreen Park and Ride. And this will be for unhoused citizens who are living in their vehicles. CEO Sean Donahue indicated that there had been no problems. It's been a pretty, pretty smooth operation so far. And C-Trans was recommending an extension, which the board did approve. The board also approved the acquisition of a one-acre parcel located at the corner of Northeast 18th Street and 65th Avenue. The parcel abuts a current, they presently own C-Trans property to the south. And this will allow for future expansion of C-Trans maintenance facility. And Sean brought up a couple of other points. He announced that C-Trans is moving ahead with purchasing the hardware necessary to provide Wi-Fi service at the, at the Vine BRT station platforms. And he quite sincerely and was quite moved when he recognized and complimented the C-Trans employees and management for the teamwork that they have exhibited during the pandemic. So he was really grateful for the service that the employees have done. The last item, and I want to echo what the mayor said, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas as this is our last meeting for 2020. I think it's, it's been a rough year for everyone, but it's also a time when I think it's important for all of us to count our blessings. And I think we are all are thankful to be living in La Center. So with that, I'll say Merry Christmas and a good New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams.
There you go, Mayor.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. We, I figured you're gonna call. I just, I don't have much to report tonight. Weather's starting to get bad, so you know, please watch your driving. I'm gonna think we're probably gonna see some freezing weather here fairly soon. Definitely roads are wet, so allow some extra distance, leave a little early to, so you're not in a hurry going places. And be careful. The town looks great, all the Christmas lights out. I'm glad to see them. Glad everybody's in the, kind of trying to get in the Christmas spirit to pick up what we, what a mess of a year we've had out here. That being said, I'd like to wish everybody on the council, planning commission, and the city employees, as well as the community, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, and be safe and we'll see you next year. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobin.
Thank you. Congratulations, Dennis. Echoed as Doug said there. Liz, we're moving up the ladder here. We won't be last in our comments. This will be fun. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a very safe and Happy New Year. Looking forward to a 2020, a much better year ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Servini.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to wish everyone in the community and city staff and fellow council members and our new city attorney, everyone involved in making La Center the wonderful community that it is. And wish everyone to have a very safe and joyous Christmas and look forward to the New Year for everyone.
Very good. Thank you. And Councilmember Hill.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank the council for their support and, and welcoming me to the city council, the mayor as well. I look at this as being a real opportunity and for me and hopefully for the citizens of La Center and the council. Hope to bring some different aspects or different views on different items this coming year. I want to thank the planning commissioners for their support over these years and what a wonderful time I've had in that position as a, as a planning commissioner. I do want to thank the staff, city staff, again, as others have already said it, regarding the decorations in our city, just a wonderful job Matt and his crew are doing. I hope that information gets down to the lowest level of our thanks. And again, just Merry Christmas to the citizens of La Center and our city staff and to each of you council members. Again, brand of privilege to be a part of La Center and now a member of the city council. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda are staff reports. We do have two staff reports this evening. The first one will be the Finance Department staff report. And the Administrative Services Manager will be giving the report. Maria.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. There were 43 business and residents in La Center that were given grants for our COVID grant totaling $51,263. In total, including the grants the city was able to utilize, $93,835 of care spending. The November sales tax disbursement was $71,202. This is compared to just over $36,000 in 2019. So once again, continuing to see that upward trend. And the new senior accountant will be starting on January 4th. Riley Barbara is a CPA and is excited to join the City of La Center's finance department. We have completed the audit for years 2017, 2018, and 2019. The next audit will take place in 2022 and will cover the years 2020 and 2021. And the final audit report will be sent out when it is received from the state auditor's office, which is expected to be just after the beginning of the year. The staff are working with McKay Spizito to implement an updated fee schedule encompassing land use, building, engineering, and other fees related to community development activity in the city. And this is anticipated to come before the council in early 2021 for adoption. And then the stormwater maintenance fee is set to increase 2% or 20 cents a month in 2021. This will increase that portion of the bill to 1040 a month and will first be reflected on the February billing. This is in accordance with the three-year plan that was adopted in 2019. And then the governor has once again extended the late fees under proclamation 2020.10. And that is until January 19th for utility late fees. And then we have our final gambling tax breakdown of our revenue for 2020. And the total gambling tax revenue for the year is $387,744, which is just over $890,000 less than 2019. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
So the next report is the Community Development Staff Report and Jeff Swanson will be presenting this evening. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. There we go. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Jeff Swanson. I'm your community development consultant. And clerk, if we could go to the next page of the staff report, which should be a map. There we go. Just gonna give a few project updates. I'm going to defer the update on Riverside until the end of project updates. And then we'll invite Bronson to give his report. And then we're going to talk about the 2021 city legislative agenda. So the first project update is number six, which is the Heritage Center Building B. There's a applicant for tenant improvements, Teresa's Little School. And the applicant was recently notified that they need a conditional use permit for that type of use in that zone. And so we're working with them to assist them through the process of getting that. On the La Center Middle School, that's project number seven, the framing of the school has begun. The lift station panel covered and concrete pad was given a permit to the applicant on December the 7th. The next one is Minute Management, project number eight, and that'll be on the next page, clerk. The next map that shows the La Center Junction. Here we go. The applicant has indicated that they plan to submit hotel, hotel plans shortly for building review. So very soon, we should be going to the building permit review process for a hotel at the junction. If we can go back to the prior page. So project number nine is the Schwarz B&amp;B. And the building on that site has begun. Number 14 is Highland Terrace. The contractor has likely completed all work for the wet season and has placed erosion control methods on-site to reduce erosion impacts. They were also notified that a tree removal permit is needed through the city. The next project I'll talk about is number 22, Bellic Town Homes. The applicant has constructed street and storm drain improvements adjacent to the parcel. And then citywide shoreline master program, the planning commission had a work session on December 8th. And we anticipate the city council hearing in January or February of 2021 for the shoreline master program update. The ADU code update. Planning commission held a public hearing on November the 10th and recommended approval. And again, we expect to hold a council hearing on that January or February of this next year. The downtown overlay code update is coming before council this evening for a public hearing. And now we'll talk about project number 17, which is Riverside Estates. And from the building and planning side, 26 homes in Phase 1 have been given occupancy. And the applicant has submitted park plans for Phase 4 on November 3rd. And that submission was deemed complete on November 17th. And now I'll invite Bronson Potter to give his update on this project.
Thank you, Jeff. So on November 24th this year, the Clark County Superior Court entered a order appointing a receiver for the Riverside Estates project. And the petition for the appointment of the receiver was Construction Loan Services, which is the lender for ECM, who is the developer of this project. And the terms of the loan between ECM and Construction Loan Services provided that if ECM defaulted on their loan obligations, Construction Loan Services have the right to apply for and receive the appointment of a receiver. So what that means for this project is that the control and the possession of the property of ECM Riverside has been transferred to the receiver. So the ownership stays with ECM, but the control, possession, management of the property is now in the hands of the receiver. So the ownership stays with ECM, but the control possession management of the property is now in the hands of the receiver. And this is sort of similar, but a little different from a bankruptcy. So a bankruptcy is a federal proceeding in which the debtor petitions the court to provide it with protection and in some cases reorganization, other cases liquidation, but it protects the debtor. A receivership protects the property. So in this case, Construction Loan Services asked that the court appointed receiver to manage the property of the debtor. And so that happened on November twenty-four. The receiver has the authority to affirm or reject contracts that affect the property. And for the city of La Center, we have basically three contracts that come into play. We have the development agreement, which modified some conditions of approval for the subdivision of the property from what the hearing examiner approved. There is also a reimbursement agreement where the ECM agreed to reimburse the city for costs incurred in reviewing development applications. And then there's an amendment to the development agreement. And that amendment essentially shifted the requirement to provide park space from phases one, two, and three into phase four, which is the property to the north of the site. So learning of the receivership, what I did yesterday was I sent a letter to the receiver and the receiver's attorney saying that the city has to know whether the receiver is going to affirm or reject the terms of the development agreement and the amendment of the development agreement and reimbursement agreement. And without knowing whether or not the receiver was going to affirm or reject those agreements, the city has the way of knowing what the conditions of approval that applied to the project are. And that until we know what the conditions of approval are going to be, until we know that the receiver is affirming those agreements or rejecting those agreements, we can't process any addition, any further development applications for that site. There's a number of items that are left to be completed with phase one in terms of some public improvement. And public public improvements that have to be completed. There's some phase two public improvement requirements that have to be completed before we're going to approve the final plan phase two. Then we have to know if parks are going to be provided on phases one, two, and three, or if those park improvements are going to be provided in phase four. So essentially, the bottom line is we need to know what the receiver's position is on different agreements that the city has with the developer ECM before we can move forward with approving or not approving different development applications. This is, I think, a little bit of a good news and bad news situation in that we've been trying to get the different public improvements completed for some time. And ECM hasn't gotten those items completed. So hopefully the receiver, knowing that the city can't move forward without knowing what the position is approving these agreements and moving forward with these improvements is we hopefully we will get the ball moved forward on getting these things done. But for right now, we're we're in a little bit of a wait and see mode. But I think we should see some responses in the pretty immediate future.
Happy to entertain any questions about the status of the project or the receivership.
I have none. Bronson, you did a pretty good job there in explaining that. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any questions about any of the other projects covered in the report?
Jeff, this is Randy. On on your map, item eleven. Do you see that there on Aspen, along Aspen?
Yes.
Do you know anything about that large parcel on the other side of Aspen to the east of the the figure eleven? There's been some activity, people moving around in there, cleaning it up. It was for sale and that sign's gone. Guys, you're pretty good.
I'm not aware of any activity on that site.
Okay, well, something's cooking out there because it was for sale and it's got cleaned up. So, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Williams, this is Ethan Spoo, city planner. Can you hear me okay?
I hear you fine. Anything? Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, I just I received a call on that property that you're talking about there on the east side of Aspen a couple of weeks ago. And somebody was asking about possibly raising, excuse me, growing plants there and selling them. And so that was the most recent communication I had with them, but I was not aware that there was, you know, anything else going on. But we let them know that that particular zoning, the low-density zoning that applies to that site would not allow that. And so, you know, I may take a quick visit out to that site just to kind of see what's what's going on there, but appreciate you bringing it up.
I think there's two parcels there. There's two houses on that. The northernmost house did have an occupant up to probably six months ago. Then there's a derelict house down right on Tenth and Aspen that's been sitting for a long time. I think that's a separate parcel in there, but it's a large parcel. So curious, yeah, take a take a ride up there, take a peek at it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Clerk, if we could go to the next part of this, so you down one more. Okay. In your packet, you have our two thousand and twenty-one legislative priorities and the backup materials that go with the legislative priorities. And I'll just walk through this document that summarizes them. Our top priority at this point is a request for construction funding for the Breezy Creek Culvert replacement and East Fourth Street widening. In the two thousand and nineteen Washington State Legislature appropriated one and a half million dollars to the city through a grant for design and pre-construction work for the project. And you're all very familiar with the work that's been done to date in terms of design that well underway. The estimated amount for construction that remains is ten and a half million. That's unfunded. We do have a one million, forty-five thousand dollar rural surface transportation block grant that has been awarded through RTC for construction for the year two thousand and twenty-four. So we're going to continue to pursue funding so that we can fully fund the construction of that project. We'll look at TIB and other programs such as initiatives for improving this passage, removing fish blocking culverts. And we'll look at other federal funding sources as well. This year's legislative priorities is a little bit different. Earlier in the year, we put together a list of capital requests and transportation projects in the event that Congress approved a an infrastructure package as they had been discussing doing early on here when COVID hit. And our requests, we have the city hall consolidation project, the new city hall, and the tenant improvements involved at the TDS building that we budgeted at one point two million. The community center commercial kitchen that Meals on Wheels uses some HVAC and parking lot repairs and replacement. We have that budgeted at five hundred thousand. And the historic town center subarea plan and planned action area that was deferred this year, we have that estimated at five hundred thousand. On transportation projects, we're looking at Aspen Avenue and West Tenth Street doing some repairs and reconstruction because of the years of overweight truck diversion from Interstate five. And we estimate that project to be two and a half million dollars. As you are probably aware, the northbound Interstate five bridge over the east fork of the Lewis River is weight limited. And so those heavy trucks come through the middle of La Center and go out Pacific Highway and re-enter Interstate five up at Woodland. And that's accelerated the wear and tear on some of our local streets. So we're seeking some funding for that. And then Northwest Pacific Highway Reconstruction. This is the replacement of what's essentially a rural roadway configuration with an urban complete streets transportation facility. We don't really have any preliminary design work underway, but using our city engineers' best guess, we would say that's going to be a twenty million dollar project to upgrade that road from the city limits into the town center. The city of La Center also endorses the Association of Washington Cities two thousand and twenty-one legislative priorities. And there's a flyer that explains what those priorities are in the backup materials. And regional priorities on the Interstate five corridor, looking at solutions to the increasing congestion and safety incidents and delay on the I five corridor in southwest Washington, which is a key policy in the Clark County Transportation Alliance two thousand and twenty-one policy statement which you endorsed last month. And it's included in this packet as well, now complete with the city's logo on it. And they've also endorsed our Breezy Creek Culvert replacement, East Fourth Street widening project. On broadband access, the city supports legislation and infrastructure investments that'll increase access to broadband. And we join the Port of Ridgefield, the City of Ridgefield, and other regional partners in that request. And the Port of Ridgefield has an ask for the IT three Discovery Center. It's a five point nine million dollar request to invest in phase one of that project, which would provide advanced training in industry and technology partnering with the K twelve system, Clark College, and existing employers and workers and new workers who are seeking job training. And there are some backup materials in the packet that talk about that project as well. Are there any questions about the legislative agenda?
Yeah, Jeff, I have a question. On the planned action area, just refresh my memory here. I thought it was going to be five hundred thousand dollars or was budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for both areas, Timmins Road area and the downtown. And in this right up here, it's talking about the town center. Is that, can you give me some clarification on that, please?
Yeah, so we're including Tim and the Tim and Landing area as part of the town center. Basically, the bookends of the bridge and the planning for both of those bridge approaches and landings.
Okay, thank you.
So it's the same project?
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Jeff, this is Dennis Hill. Back on the the area regarding the Fourth Street construction. I hadn't heard that two thousand and twenty-four before. Is that pretty much what they're shooting for as far as construction start?
I think we would probably get funded, maybe able to get funding for the two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three cycle. And then the RTC funding would come in at the tail end of the project.
So you would anticipate it would actually get started somewhere maybe in two thousand and twenty-two?
Most likely, if we can get the get the funding we need.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I think what we wanted to do was get kind of a head nod from the council like we did on the CCTA policy statement that everyone's comfortable endorsing this set of legislative priorities for the next year.
So is there any other comments or questions for Jeff before we go ahead? Just like Keith said, we'll just give a basic head nod. I mean, I think everybody is in agreement with the legislative and what's been outlined here by.
I'm I'm okay with it.
Good.
I'm okay.
This is Dennis. I'm okay.
From Randy, did you, did we hear from you, Randy?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Good deal. Okay. And
Yeah, I am as well.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you for your work and wish you all a happy Christmas and New Years.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
And thank you as well, Bronson, for the update on Riverside. Okay. So on this evening's agenda, we do have one ordinance. It's the downtown overlay code ordinance, two thousand and twenty dash zero five. The city contract planner, Mr. Ethan Spoo, will be presenting that this evening. So Ethan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And tonight, we're going to be talking with you about the downtown overlay code, which is a project that Planning Commission's been working on for a couple of months. I am sharing my screen here. I'm not sure if you can see it. But great. And so as you might be aware, there is what's called an overlay zone in downtown. This is the city zoning map that you're looking at here. And so this sort of crosshatch over downtown, thin black lines, which are just a little bit difficult to see, is where the overlay zone is located at. And so generally speaking, that's bounded by Pacific Highway on the west, Seventh Street on the north, Fourth Street on the south, and then it kind of jogs between Birch and then down to Fifth and and Fourth Street on the on the east side. And so what that overlay zone does, it's coupled with some zoning code language in chapter eighteen, one fifty-five of the city's code. And those, that particular code section addresses requirements, you know, kind of in two different categories. The first category is site improvements, so things like sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, and parking. And then it also regulates building design, so facade appearance and materials, roof materials and design, windows, building lighting, and so forth. And it even gets down to paint specifying paint colors. So those, you know, those are some pretty specific regulations that apply on top of the base zoning regulations. And the downtown overlay zone came about in two thousand and six, following the city's adoption of the downtown design plan and guidelines. And I think maybe some of you were on Planning Commission at that time and worked on that project. The purpose of that plan was to establish a consistent set of design guidelines that would define and identify downtown and thereby promote the development and redevelopment of downtown with a consistent appearance. And so in addition to containing design guidelines, that 2005 plan also contained recommendations for infrastructure improvements and, and financial incentives. And so this is, this is what that 2005 plan looked like. Cover that. And so I'm going to be showing you a couple of things in that plan as I talk here tonight. And so following completion of that design plan, the city incorporated the design guidelines into the code and those became design standards. And so those were incorporated pretty much verbatim into the city's code. But there were a couple of issues that were left unresolved and that the plan did not talk about and that staff at that time had to, and Planning Commission and the city in general, had to make some decisions about. And a couple of those were, number one, where should this downtown overlay zone apply? Because this particular plan here did not really say where it should apply. It just said that the city should adopt a downtown overlay zone. And then number two, what should be the threshold for applying the design standards? It really didn't talk about that very much. And, you know, so when I say that, I'm talking about should it apply only to new uses? Should it apply also to remodels and rehabilitation projects? There were some clues, however, in this plan in terms of the threshold and the overlay zone. So I've highlighted a couple of those things here for you on this page. I'm not sure if you can see this, if I need to zoom in perhaps a little bit more. But essentially what this says here is it recommends that the city establish this overlay zone that would prescribe specific design regulations only for downtown commercial uses. And so that's the key takeaway for you there, that it's really recommending limiting those design standards to commercial uses. And it also recommended that it apply for new construction or major remodeling. But it really didn't say what major remodeling was. And so, you know, there's different definitions of that. If you look around at the design standards as we've done as part of the, as part of staff work and part of the Planning Commission discussion. Different cities use a different threshold for what, you know, major remodeling is and what they apply their design standards to. However, it's worth mentioning that most cities do not apply their design standards to remodeling projects. It's really meant for new construction and new uses. So there's a couple of issues with the way that the city wrote its code up and adopted it at that time that make it inconsistent with what the downtown design plan intended. And I think I'm going to go ahead and pull up this attachment here or exhibit here, which is part of your agenda packet. This is Exhibit A to the ordinance that's in in front of you tonight. So this is the Legislative Edit Code. And so what, what this old code or the code that we're proposing to delete does is it applies the downtown overlay standards to all developments within downtown. Doesn't really say what all development is. There is a definition of development in the city's code and it's pretty much anything that's a man-made, a man-made change to property or buildings, you know, so that's pretty much anything. And then it also applies the standards to the cost of interior remodeling, which is estimated to exceed 50% of the assessed building value. So, you know, there's a couple of issues with that. One, I mean, the primary issue is that that definition, we think, and Planning Commission, the recommendation that's before you tonight from Planning Commission, is that that language is really too broad because it doesn't say what type of development. It's inconsistent with the original, with the downtown design planning guidelines, which recommended that these design standards apply to commercial uses only and to major remodels. Now, I think there was an attempt here at the time to apply this to major remodels, but I think that applying them to, applying the standards to interior remodels is, is, is one of the issues. And so the issue with that is just that if you have a building owner who wants to make some interior improvements, that 50% threshold, even though that might seem relatively high to you, is relatively easy to exceed. And so that therefore discourages property owners and building owners from making those interior improvements. And as I hinted at earlier, most jurisdictions don't apply their design standards and their site planning standards to interior building remodels. So the broad applicability to all development really, you know, in contrast to what the intent, the original intent of the plan was, really discourages building and property owners from making improvements, not encourages them to make the improvements, which is what the intent was of the 2005 plan. So recognizing the issues that this creates and the negative impact that this might have on people's ability to improve their property and not be required to make a host of other improvements that would probably make it prohibitively expensive for them to undertake their, their remodel project. Recognizing what those, recognizing that problem, Planning Commission and staff worked on some new code language, which is, which is up in front of you here, which is more consistent with, we believe more consistent with that 2005 design plant, downtown plan and design guidelines. And so what this says then, there's kind of two pieces of this. The downtown overlay standards apply to all new commercial mixed use and multifamily buildings within the downtown overlay zone. And then it would also apply to major exterior redevelopment or rehabilitation with costs exceeding 80% of the assessed value of the building and land. And so we're raising the threshold there to which these standards would apply in two different ways, not only raising it from 50 to 80%, but also applying the value of the building and the land, which is what some other jurisdictions do. Because if you have a low value building, as I said earlier, you can, pretty quickly with, with a remodel project, you can exceed that threshold and then be required to make all sorts of site improvements that you didn't initially anticipate under this code. And then this code goes on to specify that there's certain uses that are exempt from, from these design standards. And, and those are new single family construction or the exterior remodel of existing single family residences, bed and breakfasts and the conversion of single family homes to bed and breakfast uses, the interior remodel of buildings, exterior building improvements, less than 80% of the building and land assessed value, which is, you know, kind of the converse of this up here. And then any kind of replacement of building materials and elements which are done for maintenance purposes only, you know, such as replacing windows or roofing materials or, or so forth that you're doing to match what you have there existing only for maintenance purposes, not for upgrade purposes. So we think this better meets the intent of that 2005 design plan. It avoids the problems that arise when applicants come to the city, any applicants in downtown, and they want to make building improvements. And all of a sudden, they're thrown into a process and being required to meet standards that were really never intended to apply to non-commercial uses and to minor remodel projects. So with that, I'll go ahead and take any questions. We are recommending that you hold a public hearing tonight for this code. It's relatively short and simple, we think. And then recommending that, that you adopt the code.
Ethan, this is Doug. I do have a question. You know, I think the, the old requirements or the requirements as they exist today are very restrictive. And I'm glad to see this. But just out of curiosity, do we know if we have have lost out on any improvements because of the old, the old system? Is there anything documented or, or known that the people have backed away from improving because of the old system?
You know, not in the time that I've been here, there hasn't been a lot of, that I've been working for the city. There hasn't been a lot of inquiries about development in downtown. But certainly it's something that we could, we would anticipate happening as, as properties redevelop, you know, especially if there's additional vacant properties someday. And so that's, you know, part of the impetus for, for this project is being proactive and looking ahead to, to when those things might happen.
Yeah, yes, I agree with you. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Ethan or discussion amongst the council members before I open up the public hearing? Okay, not hearing any questions. It's right now 7:33. I'll open up the public hearing if anyone would like to comment on this evening's ordinance change. If you could please give us your name and address and if you'd limit your comments to three minutes.
Hey, 305 West Third Street, Sean Wright. The Planning Commission did a really great job on this. It's a good middle ground between, you know, still requiring updates for new development or redevelopment, but, you know, still enticing development. So I would encourage the council to adopt this. That's all.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay, at 7:34, I will close the public comment period. Thank you for that comment, Sean. And turn it back over to the council for any questions, discussions, comments?
Ethan, this is Randy. Thanks for your work on this. Glad to see these antiquated things or misconstrued or missupported things taken care of. What prompted this? Somebody say we need to fix it?
Yeah, I mean, it was a combination of looking at some existing projects that came through the door. The Schwartz B&amp;B project, which is on Aspen and Seventh, and then also the city's TES building. And then, as I said earlier, kind of looking ahead proactively to some of the projects that could happen in downtown.
Well, I'm glad we're getting it fixed beforehand rather than having to do variances on it on other things. So thanks for your hard work on that.
Ethan, this is Liz. Do you think there are other aspects of the, the ordinance that need reviewed as well? I mean, when you were reading through it and when I did my initial cursory review, I was taken back by us dictating what a property owner, when it gets into the color or the type of roof, you know, it just seems as if in some instances, we go, we may be going too far.
Yeah. You know, I, I would tend to agree with that. And the example that you provided with paint color is probably a really good one. I think it's very uncommon. I'm not going to say that I've never seen it, but I think it's very uncommon that jurisdictions regulate paint color. And so I do think that at some point in the future, that we should take a closer look at some of those design standards. And I also mentioned earlier that they were taken verbatim, I think almost word for word in every case from the, the design, from the downtown plan and design guidelines. And really what you would ideally do is take those design guidelines and reinterpret them in a more implementable way to create design standards instead of adopting the design guidelines into the code like that. So there's probably a number of different things that, that we should look at. Another example, I guess, would be that in, in, early on in that code, there's, one of the requirements is that buildings meet certain design aesthetics or, or, or meet certain architectural designs like Victorian and Craftsman and so forth. And that's a really difficult to implement standard as well, especially as applies to remodels. Because if somebody remodels part of their project, can you really expect that that part of the project's gonna, you know, have a Victorian aesthetic and the, and the part that they didn't remodel will remain the same? So yes, long-winded answer to your question, but there is a number of things we should look at. The reason we didn't go through that code at this point and look at those is just that we knew that that was a much larger undertaking and the applicability section was a fairly simple fix. But the planning, I should also mention, the Planning Commission will be taking on Title 18 code updates next year. And so they're going to be looking more broadly at, at the development code, possibly including this, this chapter.
I, I would suggest that we do do that in terms of keeping a focus on what can we do in our ordinance language that draws interested parties to develop and make, make this their community as well? Not getting into dictating some preconceived notion of what any individual at any point in time wants.
Right.
It just is, is, I mean, it makes absolutely no sense. In today's approach to investment, that person coming across the threshold with the dollars to invest isn't necessarily going to be holding tight to some preconceived notion of what building existed previously. And I would hate to see us continue to lose revenue, whether it's commercial or any type of professional because of those types of guidelines.
Right.
And to take a step further on what Liz was saying, I agree with you, Liz. I think it also correlates at this time with the sub-area planned action that we're getting ready to take to have code that's updated and reflects those views. I have to agree.
This is Dennis. I just want to respond to just one thing that Liz had brought up regarding color. One of the things that was discussed at some length on this color, I think, was to try to was to try to, uh, uh, avoid situations where we have, uh, someone coming in and, and, and and painting a yellow house, a bright yellow home, something of that nature. So I think the language was such that to try to keep it consistent with the, the existing color palette, you might say, in the community and, and somehow try to discourage, uh, someone from coming in there and putting a, a bright yellow or red or whatever, uh, and in, in the midst of a community that already has a, a, a color palette, so to speak. So probably more discussion obviously on that, but that's kind of where that came from as far as, uh, trying to develop some kind of guidance on, on the plate.
I still wouldn't, I, I would find it totally offensive as an event, coming from an investor perspective, of anyone trying to tell me what color I was going to paint my building, whether it was residential, whether it was commercial, or whether it was, you know, any, you know, if they want to invest in this community, um, I don't think it's our responsibility, or I think it just is too broad of a swath for us to get into telling them what they can paint, what they can plant and what materials they can use. We wouldn't want it as a, a homeowner, so why should we force it on anybody else?
This is Doug, just to add a comment to that. I'm, I'm looking at the, the code as it's written now and, um, eighteen dot one five five zero five zero. And, um, it talks about building facades for new construction. And we've defined acceptable architectural styles. I'm not going to read them all. There's Victorian, classic revival, craftsmen, so on and so forth. And I would think that as long as the colors, if we, if we can determine what colors were used back in those days when those things were built, then, then that should be, should be acceptable. But I think that's, this will take a little more, a little more research. As long as we want to stick with the, with the, uh, architectural styles that are, that are defined here. Just a thought.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, Ethan. Appreciate it. Uh, if there's no other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh five. No, it's amending section eighteen dot one five five zero two zero downtown overlay district code. Applicability of the La Cendrana Municipal Code to apply to standards of the downtown overlay district.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendments to the La Cendrana Municipal Code, Chapter eighteen point one five five, the downtown overlay district. If I could get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Both?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yeah.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve unanimously. Thank you, council. Again, thank you, Ethan. Uh, good presentation.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Ethan.
That concludes our, uh, meeting for this evening. Again, I want to thank, uh, everyone that's, uh, joined us here this evening or participated in our meeting. And again, uh, to wish everybody a safe and, and happy holiday season. With that, I would like to, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. And move to second it to adjourn. All favor say aye.
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 Abstain. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Christmas. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.